Yeah. I think it's smart.
Which one? Um, that's probably at the screen. Or they just put it up. They can make funny faces.
Welcome to the Maumee City Council meeting. It's July 21st at 6:15 PM. Mr. Noonan is excused this evening, so we'll call the roll.
Lineback?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So before Committee of the Hall, we do have a couple of people that we want to honor this evening in our community. So first up, we have Andrea Shrewsbury, who works for, as a clerk of courts for Maumee. And she has actually been chosen as to be Clerk of the Year in Ohio. So I'd like to read a letter from the President of the Ohio Association of Municipal County Clerks, County Court Clerks. This year, Ohio Association of Municipal County Clerk, County Court Clerks Association, Clerk of the Year Award goes to a clerk who has been given exemplary service and leadership within Ohio's municipal court system. She has served as Clerk of Court for the Maumee Municipal Court since being appointed to this position in 2018 by Judge Hazard. Following a period of significant administrative transition, her appointment was part of a broader effort to implement changes aimed at curbing the court's deficit, demonstrating her ability to manage and improve court operations during challenging times. Andrea's commitment to professional development is evident from her completion of the Court Management Program in 2010, an executive training initiative designed to enhance the skills of court professionals. At the time, she was serving as the Chief Deputy Clerk in Oregon Municipal Court, highlighting her dedication to continuous learning and excellence in court administration. Andrea continued with her professional development in 2013 and completed the Certified Court Executive Program by the National Center for State Courts Institute for Court Management. On top of that, she has done for the courts, on top of that, all that she's done for the courts she has served, she's found the time to volunteer also for the Ohio Association Municipal County Court Clerks. First, as our historian and currently as our secretary, is a position that requires a three-year commitment. Her extensive experience, leadership, and dedication to the field of court administration and her dedication through her current position as the Clerk of Courts of the Maumee Municipal Court makes her a most deserving member for this recognition. Signed, Melissa Letierl, President. I also would like to read a proclamation to Andrea, if you would come forward, please, to the microphone. And I know Judge, if you'd like to stand with her, that'd be, that'd be awesome. Andrea Shrewsbury has served the city of Maumee with dedication, professionalism, and unwavering commitment in her role as Clerk of Court. And her exemplary service, leadership, and attention to detail have greatly contributed to the effective operation and integrity of the Maumee Municipal Court. And Andrea Shrewsbury has earned the admiration and respect of her colleagues, peers, and the community she serves. And in recognition of her outstanding achievements and contributions, Andrea Shrewsbury has been named Clerk of the Year by the Ohio Association of Municipal County Court Clerks, a prestigious honor that reflects her excellence and impact across the state of Ohio. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, James McDonald, Mayor, do hereby proclaim July 21st, 2025, as Andrea Shrewsbury Clerk of the Year Day in the city of Maumee, Lucas County. Signed, my name. Congratulations, Andrea. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I'll just say a couple of words. We're extremely proud of Andrea, but some of the things that you all may know, maybe not, that Andrea has done since she got here aren't really reflected in, in that award. And I think those are, are better known by the community here, or should be known. She's managed the clerk's office with less than 70% of the staffing level as when we came in for the last eight years. She has digitally stored 50 years' worth of records with your help, the city's help, but she spearheaded that. She has sought out and secured hundreds of thousands of dollars in grants that the court never applied for before. She has secured the funds in such a manner that the theft that occurred before I took office won't ever happen again. It's now three, three sets of eyes on it, and it just can't happen. She has the respect of the staff. She has the trust of the judge, and I believe the trust of the city administration, and obviously the trust of the rest of the clerks in the state of Ohio. She drives that nightmare of a drive every day from Oregon to Maumee. There's no easy way to do it, and I don't think you can get there from here, but she manages to do it, and we're lucky that she does. So, thank you very much, Andrea.
Thank you.
I need my glasses. I'm somewhat blind without them. Good evening and thank you. When I received the award for Clerk of the Year at the Spring Conference of the Ohio Association of Municipal County Court Clerks, I was truly taken aback by the honor that was bestowed upon me. At that time, the only words that I could muster was a simple thank you. I was too emotionally affected to express my gratitude, so I'm hoping that tonight I could say a few more words. I'm already a little reclined. I'm so sorry. I can honestly say that there's nothing more gratifying than being recognized by your peers for the work that you do on a daily basis. But I would be remiss not to acknowledge and thank a few others who have supported me along the way. First, I would like to thank Judge Hazard and the entire staff of the Maumee Municipal Court. Without all of your hard work and dedication, I would not be standing humbly before you today. I would also like to take a moment to thank my entire family. All of you have been so supportive over the course of my journey, and for that, I will always be eternally grateful. To Mayor McDonald, the members of Maumee City Council, and the numerous esteemed colleagues who are both present and not present this evening, thank you. Your acknowledgement of this achievement is truly special and a moment in time I will always remember. Finally, and most importantly, I would like to thank the citizens of the city of Maumee. It truly is an honor to serve as your Clerk of Court. I will continue to work tirelessly to make you proud and to do my best to shine a positive light upon the Maumee Municipal Court. Thank you.
Our second recognition this evening is actually more of a tribute. More than a week ago, we lost a dear friend and a community champion with the passing of Mike McCarthy. His paper in The Mirror put out an awesome tribute to him this past year, something that will go down in the history books of Maumee for sure. And so I thought it was fitting that we also honor a dear friend and a professional that made Maumee his home and his number-one job that he did here. So Mike and I had a very common bond with the Detroit Tigers and the Detroit Red Wings, and we talked every time we met about them, and they were important teams that we'd followed since kids. So we had a dear connection. So again, I thought it was very appropriate that we had a proclamation. I know his son, Denny, has a few things he'd like to say as well. So let me read this proclamation. "Mike McCarthy faithfully served the city of Maumee and surrounding communities as a longtime owner, editor, and publisher of The Mirror Newspaper, a weekly publication that became a trusted voice in our community. And under Mike's leadership, The Mirror celebrated 45 years of continuous publication on March 17th, 2025. Marking nearly half a century of the highest standards of journalism chronicling local news, community milestones, school and sports achievements, and the lives of everyday citizens with dignity, integrity, and honesty. And whereas his unexpected passing has left a profound void in the community, so he's so faithfully served, but his legacy continues through the enduring impact of The Mirror Newspaper, his dedicated staff, and his beloved family. And whereas it is both fitting and necessary to honor Mike's life, his contributions to journalism, and his unwavering dedication to the people of Maumee, now therefore be resolved that I, James McDonald, do hereby proclaim July 21st as Mike McCarthy Remembrance Day in the city of Maumee, Lucas County, Ohio. Signed, James McDonald." We'll miss you, Mike. And Denny, I know you have a few things to say. Denny is Mike's son, for those who do not know.
Hi, everyone. You'll have to excuse me. I'm not much of a public speaker, but I've prepared this. My name is, my name is Denny McCarthy. I'm Mike's son and graphic designer and classified ad manager for The Mirror. I've worked full-time at the paper for 10 years, and behind me are my coworkers, circulation manager and my mom, Carol McCarthy, Maumee reporter, Kristy Fish, Anthony Wayne reporter, Karen Gerhardinger, art director, Dan Lawrence, office manager and copywriter, Amy Manley, and copy editor, Joy Mulholland Monroe. We at the paper would like to extend our gratitude to the city of Maumee for officially honoring editor, publisher, and owner, Mike McCarthy. As an integral part of the paper since its founding 45 years ago, Mike carried a wide range of additional responsibilities far beyond what any sane person would have expected of him. From selling ads, writing stories, covering events on the weekend, and laying out the paper late into the night every single Tuesday since before I was even born, he managed every aspect of the business, from the smallest operations to the overall visions for the future of the paper and often worked seven days a week. Still, he did it all with genuine optimism and enthusiasm for both his craft and the community. I truly don't know how he did it all. Mike was a smiling face that many people in Maumee were lucky enough to see quite frequently, and his attitude was absolutely contagious. He could be conducting an interview during the most tense situations and also dealing with a rough patch in his own life, but still some, could still somehow tell some corny jokes and leave you with a smile on your face that gave you a bit more hope that things were just going to work themselves out in the end. He loved the city and truly wanted it to thrive, always electing to run a great feature story when a new business was opening or get deals to advertisers on a regular basis. He took the often confusing but very significant content of official meetings and translated them to the community without question for the betterment of our town. He made it his lifelong mission to fulfill the paper's motto by reflecting life along the Maumee River. Mike was a champion of precise and fair reporting throughout his entire career and fostered the same values for his employees. He would go far out of his way to cover every facet of an issue, and while his stories could reach ridiculous lengths, they all made sense and flowed effortlessly once you started reading them. He would frequently talk to the mayor, administration, council, and police and fire departments to iron out the details of, of a story. He really enjoyed collaborating with people who have a shared love for the community in an effort to make Maumee a better place to work and live. You all made the work, you all made the work a bit easier for him, and some of you even could call him your personal friend. We at the paper are like family, and people like to throw that saying around about workplaces ad nauseam, but I truly mean it. On the rare occasion that somebody left to explore other opportunities, I was hit with the same somberness I've felt hearing that a close friend is moving across the country. There's a reason why we stick around for so long. He truly cared about us as employees and close friends. He constantly offered leniency and mentorship without hesitation, just out of the goodness of his heart. All he wanted at the end of the week was to meet deadlines, to put out an upstanding piece of journalism that met his standards, while making sure that we were all happy and growing as people. Mike would oftentimes speak his mind to us privately and would wonder if people actually appreciated his work. Journalism can be a brutally unforgiving and thankless line of work at times. With this outpouring of community support, I have no doubts that he's looking down, finally able to appreciate what he's done, and enjoy the retirement he so rightfully deserved. Thank you very much for the love and support from all of us at The Mirror."
Thank you, Denny. We're now going to proceed to council business. If anybody is wanting to leave at this point, this might be your exit. Thank you. Okay, we'll proceed with Committee of the Hall. I'll turn it over to President Barrow.
Thank you, Mayor McDonald. The council having their agendas in front of you. Do you have any questions or concerns about items on the agenda?
Malineback?
This is probably one of several. This is a minor one. I think it's for our finance director. On 9B, about the leased vehicles versus the purchase and the replacement policy, I just wanted to make sure that we were considering the annual maintenance and repair costs in addition to the, the purchase price with the replacement cycle. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. Enterprise includes a little bit of a maintenance included in the lease contract for police vehicles only. So yes, I did include that calculation.
Okay, thank you.
And on the same topic, I had this question. On the Finance Committee report, it shows a $2.8 million savings over a period of nine years. And I'd asked for some more information so we could have that discussed here, and I didn't have any of that yet. I'd like that explained if that's possible, the 2.8...
I apologize. I didn't, I did not know you were looking for additional information. So I came to that calculation based on the proposed vehicle replacement policy compared to the lease program, which was replacing vehicles every three years. With the proposed vehicle replacement policy, we would keep vehicles longer, and that's where the bulk of the savings would come from.
Okay, and that reflects the maintenance, the upkeep, the...
As I said, as I said, in the enterprise lease program, the only maintenance items are the 11, included in the lease are the 11 police interceptors. So yes, there's certainly a balance between keeping a vehicle too long and increasing maintenance costs. So I took that into account when I was drafting the vehicle replacement policy, which is not finalized yet, but yes.
Right, but as I understand, the, the value for the cars now versus quite a few years ago is much less above resale.
When Enterprise initially proposed the lease program, starting in the fall of '21, before my time here, and then even into the early, into 2022, the numbers changed. So they had proposed a substantial value to roll into new, a new lease program, and that did not come to fruition. And that's the 200 and some thousand that I mentioned on the Finance Committee report.
Okay, so in the next week or so, if you could, I wouldn't mind seeing those numbers that proves out that 2.8, if that's possible. Thank you.
Sure.
I have one additional... Sure. Relative to that. So I only speak from experience, knowing that we kind of crunched cars for many years when I was chief about what was the best way to buy them and what was the most economical. We had come to the conclusion that we would replace them every two to three years for a number of reasons. One, a higher, a higher residual value that you would get when you sell, sold the car. Made it much more marketable and much more saleable. Also, a police vehicle puts so many miles on the car, but the engine hours and the idling time that an engine typically goes through could be three times that amount. So the longer you keep something, that is all taken in consideration about what the value of the car is. So I know many years ago, we either looked at, do we lease or do we buy? And we knew that buying was really the best deal because you could get a residual value for the car. It kept the repairs down, and, and you were rotating cars, you know, at a, at a frequent pace and getting residual value. But to lease, to rent a car for three years and then buy a used police car that has all those hours and engine hours on it, and not only the mileage, but the engine hours, to me, doesn't make sense. It just, it, it just doesn't compute. Either you buy or you lease. But to lease and then buy a used car that's already at its, in its last leg, basically, and now you're going to expedite repairs at an elevated level, I, I don't know how you can compute a $2.8 million savings when you have a lot of variables in there that can, that can really determine, you know, what your net income or your net benefit is. So I hope we, hope we get this hammered out because, quite frankly, I, I think renting a car and then buying a used car is not a good way to go. So...
It actually has to do with availability as well. Chief Sproul has enough room in his budget this year to purchase three interceptors, so that'll put his vehicles on a four-year replacement cycle, and we discussed that, Chief Sproul and I discussed that, as I valued his input on that as well.
That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. And Pastor Malineback, you have something else?
Well, I'm wanting to see other people first.
Is anybody else? Go ahead.
Yes. Thank you. So I was wondering a couple of things about 11D, so approving a change order number 22. So I guess there's, there's a few things. So it says in the brief that there's 21 change orders that were...
Give me 10, 10D. 10D.
10D, I'm sorry. 10D. I knew I wasn't seeing it. Yes, 10D. Thank you, Josh. So 10D. So it says that in the brief that there's 21 change orders that were already officially approved, and in change orders 1 through 15, it says, "City Council allotted staff authorization." But then in change orders 16 through 21, it switches to saying, "City Council approved for staff authorization." And then when I was looking through the list of change orders and comparing them to the agendas, packets, meeting notes, from what seemed to be the corresponding, corresponding council dates, meeting dates, I was seeing that there was at least 18 of the 21 change orders that are claiming to have already been approved by council. But I did not see that they were approved by council. I saw that change order number one was approved by council. That was the, that was the most obvious one that I found. It looked like change order number four was on the agenda for the July 18th meeting, but the amount in the agenda was for $75,000, and the amount in our list in the packet was for $404,000. It also looks like something similar to change order number 11 for the May 15th, 2023 meeting, but the amount was $19,000, not the $13,821. Change orders 16 through 19 were said to be quantity adjustments at various locations, contract time extension and miscellaneous, quantity adjustments and add-ons in various locations. I'm wondering, I guess, what these are. I see those total to just under a million. They're like $928,643. So I guess one of my questions is, why, why are the 21 change orders mentioned in this number 22 change order? And then why are they saying that they were officially approved when I'm finding no, 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 like, no facts out there that says they were approved? There's no, I went through all the agendas. I'm not seeing that we approved them. I'm not seeing they were on those council meetings, even the dates, the dates that were listed on the list didn't necessarily correspond with council meetings that we had. And then I guess I also wondered if Jennifer could explain the process for this number 22 one that was noted that it was not signed by Patrick, nor was it approved by council. So I'm guessing, wondering, you know, how is this different from the first 21 change orders?
So change order 22...
Yes.
Was given to the project supervisor in December. The bill was paid in January because the work had already been completed. So my process, the accounts payable process is the invoice comes in, it's routed to the supervisor who initially requested the purchase order, and then that supervisor signs off on it, confirming the work has been done or the product received or, or what have you. So that supervisor signed off on the invoice on December 23rd, and the invoice was then paid two weeks later because the work had been completed. The project supervisor is responsible for managing those change orders.
I have a question, and I would like Dr. Birch to answer that. Thank you. These were paid without authorization, I think, is what Ms. Puffenberger was asking why that had happened.
No, I'm wondering why on here it says that council had approved the first 21 change orders. But yeah, I don't, I don't find, I can't find any details on when we approved them and what meeting. I didn't find them in any of the agendas or any of the meeting notes. So, and then, but beyond that, it's like the way they were worded, like, you know, 1 through 15 allotted staff authorization, then all of a sudden 16 through 21 turns, turned into city council approved for staff authorization. So I guess I'm kind of wondering why that changed too, like the verbage changed.
Okay, let Dr. Birch answer that before we get too deep into this. Let's do that as we go along, please.
Yes.
Thank you.
Excuse me. It doesn't say that council approved 21 change orders. It says change orders were approved totaling $17,734,744,79. It doesn't say that council approved them. I had Matt Griggs go through, our project supervisor, go through in this original bid chart you saw here. That's why it took long. We had a public records request for this, and there was some discrepancy on some of these calculations on change... these calculations on change orders. I asked him to go through and verify when these were approved because I noticed that the, as Margot mentioned, that the change orders are dated differently than the time they were paid or approved. That's when the change order was actually created, not when it was actually approved. That's the explanation for that. The reason 21 is mentioned in here is I was asked to sign, on and around July 1st, I was handed a change order for $692,216, was asked to sign it. It was six months after the time it had been paid. And, and I refused, said, I, I don't think I have the authority to approve a change order, although this is well within the 20%. Could have signed it, but I'm not going to assign a document and postdate it six months. I'm just, I can't. It just can't happen. So, that's why you see it here for approval, is to finally get it approved.
Okay.
I mean, I can't, and the issue is...
Can you, can you, can you, can you clear up a little bit about how change orders typically go?
Yeah. Change orders for projects this size...
Which was like uptown in the Anthony Wayne project?
Yes, yes.
High-end projects.
And this is common in the construction industry. When you see a project, like for instance, the Conant Harrison Broadway Water Line for 16.48 million, that was approved by city council as part of this project. It was approved because we couldn't get bids. You remember right, when we bid that Water Main project, we had no bids, so we asked Helms, who was already on site, to see if they could handle that work, and we negotiated the price.
That was change order one?
Yes, that was.
Okay.
So, you know, the, the point is, is when you do these projects, when you have things that have already been approved, like, like you're out in the field, we have what they call field orders on projects, right? If a contractor is out there pouring concrete and said, I gotta add 30 more, 30 more feet of curb, you don't say, stop, I gotta wait for a council meeting in two weeks, and you just hold the truck right there. You can't do that kind of stuff. There are field orders. So, these change orders that are delineated in this packet go through a tremendous amount of quantity work. For instance, we have quantity for linear feet of curb. We have quantities for asphalt pavement in terms of cubic yards and square yards of installed, depending on the layer it is. We've got landscaping estimates for, in terms of per item quantity cost. At the end, if they use more dirt or they use more stone than they thought, those quantities are reconciled, what they call interim, interim adjusting change orders, which is what change order, the ones, the miscellaneous adjustments, these are, these are adjusting change orders, interim adjusting. At the end, you will have a final adjusting change orders on projects this size, and anybody who does a work this size knows that this is how it's handled in the public sector. There's no way to go through. That project would still have Conant Street dug up if you had to go through the process. That's why when I explained to council back in 20...
Excuse me, Mr. Birch, can you please respect the fact that he's talking? Otherwise, please leave. If you want to talk, please step outside and talk. Thank you.
All right. So, the, when you're doing a project, when I first asked council to give the authority for percentage increase in change orders, it was for this very reason, because there are field orders to keep a project running. You can't simply, I mean, if you look at the monstrosity of this project and including the Anthony Wayne Trail project, when you go through that process, there's times when you go out in the field and somebody says, you know, we didn't have on the, we didn't have on the, the bid to actually replace these four handicap ramps on a corner, but ODOT requirement says if you're going to pave through an intersection, you have to replace and make them ADA compliant. So, you do it. You have to make a field order choice at the point. That's where the 20% authority comes in. But I don't, I don't have the authority to, to approve, first of all, I would have taken this large of a change order to council because I wasn't sure at the time, because I didn't have this calculation, whether it was getting close to that 20% threshold. So, when he and I went through this over the phone and reviewed this change order for the numbers, the numbers worked, except there was some little bust of about $1,100 in the change order. That was back in December. I never heard back about whether, I simply forgot that it hadn't been approved. I didn't realize it until probably early last week, maybe a little before that, that this had not been approved.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Lineback?
Well, being the engineer that I am, I'm really kind of a process guy. Let me recap how I understand the process works. First, either the owner or the contractor identifies some additional work to be done. You know, this could be the field things you're talking about, or, or the owner changes their mind, says, I want to do this. Second, the contractor and the engineering company prepare and submit a change order with estimated costs. Now, it seems like this would typically be the way if we want somebody. And I understand there are things called extensions, like you're talking about with linear feet, that could come in. But if there's something, you know, it's a whole new task, not an extension of something, that the engineering company would give you an estimate, what that would cost. And that's some of these cost estimates that we're talking about, change order. Third, it seems like someone in the city would approve that change order, would say, okay, that cost looks good, that's what I told you to do, that's the scope of work and that cost, that somebody in the city would approve that. And, and I don't think that would be the director of finance who does that, because it's operational. Fourth, it seems like then the contractor, not knowing that it's been approved, can go ahead and, and do the work. Yeah, that somebody in the city would say, green light, go ahead. Or they would see it themselves in the change order, however the system works. Fifth, someone in the city would verify that the work is done and said, okay, they did what we asked them to do, it meets our standards, I'm going to authorize payment. And then after that would happen, as I, again, as I understand it, with our accounts payable system, if it's been approved by somebody in the city, again, not the director of finance, but who operations says, yep, they did what they're supposed to do, that finance just submits the invoice into the, you know, for payment in the accounts payable system. Is that generally correct?
Yes, the work had been completed. The invoice came in, the project supervisor signed off that it was completed to his satisfaction, and a payment was issued.
Okay, so, so it sounds like in this case, somehow they skipped from step one to step four, where somebody identified the need and they do the work.
Yes.
And they must have been told to do the work, or they did the work on their own, and they did the work on their own. Are they supposed to get paid?
Sir, you're confusing field order with change order.
No, the change order, I'm concerned about the financial aspect.
That is the financial aspect.
What the change order is.
A change order is the supplementation of this happening once it's all coalesced together. There are separate field orders that are authorized.
In some of these change...
Nobody has the ability to tell somebody to pay a bill other than the finance director.
The payment, but someone who authorizes that the work has been done and it can be paid. That's how I understand the process.
Correct. The supervisor signed off that the work was complete and it was okay to pay the bill.
So, you, the backend function is really kind of a, it's just an administrative thing.
Right.
If you've got the signature from the person who's responsible for saying, yep, pay it, then you put it into the system.
Correct.
My understanding is that it has to be authorized by the administrator, by, in this particular case, before the payment is issued.
Or the city council.
Or the city council.
A change order.
And that, that wasn't done. That's, that's, that's why this is on the agenda. We're approving something that was paid in January, and my question would be, why is it so many months later that we're looking at this now?
Well, I'm not sure. I don't know.
Well, it's also my question, which is what I started off with, is why are we seeing the first 21 change orders now? That's not even what we're supposed to be looking at. We're supposed to be looking at 22. So, why are the 21 even included?
I can't answer that.
You wanted, I was asked for reports. I gave you a full report. That's what this is. These change orders are all for reports. Some of these change orders you've already seen. You approved them. In fact, you made the motion on two of them. So...
So, I, so I would love to see that because I, so I, I found the one, the first change order. I, I was looking through the other council meetings because you, I, I said, okay, these, you said city council approved these, but then when you started speaking again, you said, no, city council did not approve these. This, I approved these. But now you're telling me that city council approved them and I made the motion. So, I guess I'd like to see where that is because I could not find corresponding meetings that said city council did approve these 21 change orders and where they were in these meetings. I'm looking at the, you know, I pulled up March 20th, 2023, May 15th, 2023, June 5th, 2023, July 22nd, 2024, August 7th, 2023, for 14. 15 was October 16th, 2023. But I did not find them in the meetings. So, that's why I'm wondering why the 21 were included. This is about 22. Why is 20, are the 21 included? And then why did you just say city council didn't approve them, but then you just told me the city council approved them? And I made motions.
Okay, let Dr. Birch respond, please.
I'm going to read it again.
Okay.
Original cost of the project was $14 million, and the contract was awarded to Helms Construction. 21 change orders were approved totaling $17,734,744,79, and an additional change order in the amount of $692, originally dated 12/20/2024, paid $110,000, but never officially approved. The total amount of the contract, I go on and on. Never once did I say that contract approved 21 change orders, but they did approve some of the change orders. They are listed in this spreadsheet provided by our engineering staff. That's what I said.
So, you said the contract approved those? That's what you just said?
No, I didn't say. I said council approved these. I said council approved the four that are in the council in this item. It's in the agenda. There's a spreadsheet in the agenda that talks about which ones council approved, which ones staff approved, and what those percentages are of the total project cost.
So, just to sum this up, obviously, we're kind of going back and forth.
Sure.
That's right. So, we had 21 change orders that were approved. One was not, which is before council now because we have to get it approved.
Correct.
In, in the, in the city charter, under the director of finances responsibility, doesn't, doesn't, it doesn't mean a contractor, it doesn't mean somebody that's our capital projects guy, it doesn't mean any of that. The director of finance shall examine all payrolls, bills, and other claims against the municipality and shall issue no warrant and pay out no monies unless the claim is in proper term, correctly computed, and duly approved. That is nobody else's responsibility except one person. Now, you're going to pay a bill for $600,000, a little under $700,000, you better make sure it's approved. And it wasn't. So, that's why it is now before council, because it has to get approved.
But these 21 change orders before were approved by Patrick.
Councilman Harris.
Under his, under his...
21 weren't approved by me. There are 21 change orders, four of them were approved by council.
Councilman Harris?
Thank you. The main reason for this is actually to talk about the fact that we have a change order that was paid and it's been six months. My question is, what is, if, if this council decides not to approve this, what's the result?
I don't know that answer.
Contractor did the work.
And they've already been paid, so I've had this question.
They were paid, they were paid because they did the work. They did the work before the engineering department even received the change order. It is not my responsibility to maintain the change orders. That is the, the project manager's responsibility. I pay an invoice when it's approved by the project supervisor. The work had been done several months prior to the change order even being received. That would be a great addition to chapter 103, to require change order numbers to all projects, any change orders with projects.
Okay, thank you. One last, go ahead, Councilman Lineback.
I'd like to make a motion instructing the Finance Committee to recommend revisions to section 103.05 for overseeing contract compliance, including dollar limits on individual and cumulative change orders. And I'd like to conclude in the motion that that get done on or before the next scheduled meeting. I have that in writing.
And I will second that. We can move that, we can move that to the item under new business. I think 11...
I think we need to call a rule on that motion.
What is it? Can you repeat the motion?
We need to call a rule on the motion.
Yeah, the motion. Make a motion instructing the Finance Committee to recommend revisions to section 103.05 for overseeing contract compliance and including, as part of these changes, revisions, including dollar limits on individual and cumulative change orders, doing it on or before the next scheduled council meeting.
There was a second, I, I understand. Yes, I seconded. Okay, we're going to have a discussion on this. If I want to amend this, will I amend it at this point or wait for it to come up on 11, where it's going to end up?
I think you'd have to vote on the original motion and then you could, you could, okay.
Do we have discussion on the, on the motion first?
No, we'll do that.
Can you amend that in the discussion? Can he, can he request an amendment as to what was offered?
Yeah, he can offer amendment to the motion.
Then I would, I like the revision portion of this motion. And I would not, I would rather have, instead of a dollar amount, I would have the percentage that's typical and usual when a, when our advisors...
That's, that's quite enough, please.
I would like it to be, as we do business as usual, as every city does as usual, with that percentage given to the administrator to see what that difference is. We're not going to come back for $6 or $12 or $15. The inflation's here. But I think we should leave the person in the field to give him able to do what he needs to do in a timely manner.
Would it make, would it make more sense to just make a general, a general referral to the Finance Committee to address this issue instead of specifics?
Sure.
Well, but that's, as long as it's dealing 103.05.
I mean, instead of specifics and let the committee kind of have a hearing on it.
You can't demand that the committee do something.
He's essentially asking, go, go to committee to have the discussion, to prepare an ordinance to bring back to us. We don't have an ordinance tonight to, to vote on.
Instead of listing specifics that you want done in that amendment or in that referral, it would make more sense to just refer it to the committee.
Yeah, so you would have to change that.
Yeah, okay.
If you're willing to amend that.
Can I make, amend my own motion?
Sure.
I'll make a motion instructing the Finance Committee to recommend revisions to section 103.05.
Okay.
I will also second that.
And doing so on or before the next scheduled meeting.
Okay, that makes more sense. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. I would second that. Okay. Any other further discussion? We'll call the rule on that motion.
Lineback?
Yes.
Puffenberg?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. You can proceed with committee, the whole, Mr. Birch.
Do we have any more questions or concerns on the agenda?
Just one.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, no, no, there's something else, I'm sorry.
Councilman Puffenberg.
Yes, okay. So, I, I would like to make a motion, motion to move 9A and 9G from the consent calendar. The second reading of ordinance 017-2025 and the first reading of ordinance 1925...
A in what? I'm sorry.
Of 9A and 9G, so it's the two streetlight ordinances. Especially since recent happenings, I know that Toledo Edison has been out in the field fixing some of the poles. I know we have a meeting scheduled on the 29th to talk with Victor, the representative. And I know I've gotten confirmation from at least one other city council member in our region that is interested in joining forces and talking to Toledo Edison. I would really like to see not having any rate increases this year while we continue those conversations and try to get this figured out with Toledo Edison. So, I don't know if it's appropriate to, you know, make a motion to amend the ordinances, remove the rate increase. I know it's only the, the first and second readings of these, so we're not approving them tonight, but...
Excuse me, what was the first?
I guess I'd have to ask Alan.
What was the first?
I wanted to make a motion to remove 9A and 9G from consent calendar.
So, this, we're not approving anything with these, right?
Not tonight.
This is just a reading.
They don't get approved till the final reading, so you vote them up or down at the final reading.
Right.
That's when you make a decision.
This is just a second reading.
Whether we move it or not, it's still a second reading.
Yeah, it doesn't change it. Yeah, it doesn't change it.
Okay, so we would need to refer this back to finance committee meeting to talk about the rate increase, seeing as the recent actions from Toledo Edison.
Yes, afterwards, correct.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to move this to finance committee meeting for discussion.
Wait a minute, you got, you got a suggestion up first, so moving this.
Well, I thought I needed to move it to finance first. I mean, do we just keep them on consent calendar, Alan?
Keep them on consent or still refer to finance to make a final recommendation.
Okay, so keep on consent. And I will change my motion to recommending to finance committee to discuss the rate changes based on recent movement from Toledo Edison.
Okay. Is there, let me ask a question. Is there currently a recommendation from the committee to increase the rate?
We were still talking about, no, we were still talking about the, the rate increase the last finance committee meeting.
Okay.
And we said, well, we're gonna see how this progresses with Toledo Edison. So.
So there's been no determination on a rate increase? Or no recommendation?
No, based on what's being shown to us, they're recommending a 4% rate increase.
Which is five bucks a year for like a property.
But it's, it's taking ownership of polls across the community.
Yeah, I get that.
That's the biggest, five bucks a property is a really nice number to throw out there. The 5 million's a little less than a nice number.
So, yeah.
Do you have a comment?
So, none of, none of these actually take over polls for Edison, none of these two ordinances?
Yeah.
The rate increase.
No, the rate, the rate, I mentioned that the rate increase can be referred back to the finance meeting to take them out, but these are simply readings that aren't approving those increases. If you wish to do the assessment at all, you should keep moving ahead with these and then at finance meeting, take out for the last reading. That's what I meant. Sorry, I wasn't clear.
And we can keep moving forward, but we can go back to finance to remove them.
Sure.
Since recent developments.
Sorry, I wasn't clear. Sorry.
I second that.
Any further discussion referring us to finance for the final determination of the rate, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
The point would be that to keep on our timeline, so that recommendation has to be at the next, before, the finance committee has to meet, make a new recommendation before our next.
What's the cutoff date to finally assess, September?
The second September and Monday, or second, second Monday and September.
Second Monday and September, okay.
Might have more time.
When is the meeting with Edison?
You're fine.
July 29th, is my understanding.
Okay, anything further on that? Okay, we have a motion to move the matter of the rate back to, back to finance committee because they were already discussing it, we're gonna put it back in there. And we have a second, call the roll.
Leinbach.
Yes.
Puffenberger.
Yes.
Barrow.
Yes.
Fiskus.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Kurt.
Yes.
Proceed, Mr. Barrow. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Do we have any more questions or concerns?
I just have one more.
Go ahead, Councilman Leinbach.
Where did that go? On old business 11A about the homeowner affidavit, I think we as a city want to allow residents to make improvements to their property as inexpensively as possible while meeting all building code requirements. That can be accomplished oftentimes by neighbors helping neighbors. This proposed ordinance and the associated building affidavit is an improvement over the current language in that the range of people allowed to help on a project without being paid has been expanded beyond just the owner. I think even more freedom to include friends should be included since improvements with pass inspection anyway, that's the bottom line. But this is a better ordinance than what we currently have, so I think it's moving in the right direction and I'm gonna support it.
Thank you, and I agree. Councilman Harris.
Thank you. As far as I understand about this affidavit, even with this language, I believe I've spoken with the administrator, this doesn't stop your neighbor or your friend from helping as long as you don't pay them.
Exactly.
Just because the language says this does not restrict your neighbor, does not restrict your friends, you just can't pay them. And we've, we've had this discussion many times. And yeah, I agree, I kinda wish it did say that, but it doesn't change the fact that you still can, even though it's been updated.
Okay, thank you.
I just want one more clarification.
Go ahead.
Okay, so environmental tree advisory committee meeting, I just had a question. So the, for council members, it says serve three-year terms. I just wondered why three years when council has four-year terms and we change every two years? Is it like an overlap thing or?
That's the way they originally said it when they formed the committee, so I don't know what their logic was behind it. The idea was to stagger it.
Is it like an overlap thing?
Yeah, we sat down and made that. Sorry. It's supposed to be overlap.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Having seen no other questions, this ends committee of the whole.
Thank you. We'll move to citizen comments, we have a handful here. The meetings of council are business meetings for purposes of discussion by council and consideration of matters or issues related to the business of our city. The purpose of this meeting, purpose of the meeting rules is to promote efficient orderly and productive meetings and reduce disruption at the meeting. Meetings of Mami City Council are lawful under Mami Code. No person with purpose to prevent or disrupt the meeting shall do any act which obstructs it or interferes with the due conduct. Members of the public are allowed to opportunity to speak under the rules set by this council. All comments should be respectful. Council meetings are not the forum for personal attacks. The city comment period is meant for matters or issues related to the business of the city. The city provides alternative methods or channels of communication for any citizen or person to express themselves on other topics and are not related to this business meeting. The city maintains a website which provides a forum to leave comments or complaints. Complaints that council and mayor have email addresses posted on the city website where council and myself can be reached. Matters you believe are important to Mami and complaints may be made also through emails, website submissions, conversations personally with council, the mayor, or the administrator by mail. So our first person up today is Sherry Shunk, relative to light bulbs.
Sherry Shunk, Mami. Okay, I wanna make this clear, very crystal clear. I despise liars and deceitful individuals. I will confront and call you out. And going on with that, Mr. Birch, I heard you go on and on about Toledo Edison not responding to you, your calls regarding the falling streetlight polls. What you don't know is that I was employed with two utility companies in the state of Michigan, so I have a fair understanding of what happens in the scope. The city should have, and I believe the city does, and you did acknowledge, that you have a personal accounting rep that hears all matters. After hearing you sound the alarm about all the falling streetlights that we are in grave danger, I called First Energy corporate offices on July 1st at 6:02 PM to file a repair order. Since I didn't have the exact locations, I gave 400 Conan as this, as the address and your name as contact. I was given a work order, a CTT number, to follow up on. I posted that information on Facebook along with the email that I sent to you with the CTT order, along with very direct directions on how to follow up. I posted that information at, on July 2nd at 7:55 AM with the CTT number, asking you to use that CTT number and supply First Energy with a list of poles and streetlights that need attention. I followed up with First Energy also on July 2nd at 5:02 in the evening, checking to see if you followed through. No response. My email to you was direct, I told you what needed to be done. I closed it with, please start doing your job, stop spending money unnecessarily on beautification nonsense and focus on the main pressing issue, the sewers. Maybe if priorities were addressed, you wouldn't miss deadlines with the EPA. After I posted this on Facebook, I received a text from a citizen with photos, a video, and with a location on Market Street. So, I called First Energy again using that CTT number and gave them the location. On July 3rd at 8:33 AM, I called First Energy back with all the information. Final results? Those lights poles are back up, they're repaired. I did receive a nice letter from Toledo Edison and Chief Sprow was very kind to show me that those poles were fixed. Now moving on to you, Mayor. Seriously, your statement, justice was served? How unprofessional and inappropriate of a comment from a mayor. That comment, that statement belonged in a criminal case. You're not too bright, so I'll break it down for you. There were 14.
All right, you're not honoring council rules at all, you're not, so you're not, you're not, you're not being respectful whatsoever.
What, 1,400 people signed those petitions and you had?
That's your time, thank you.
You know how.
We have David Ross, and if you're gonna, Dave, if you're gonna talk about Toledo Edison, it'll be two minutes instead of three, it's a repeat subject.
Dave Ross, Trail View. I was, but since it's going back to the finance committee, I'll wait to talk about it. So all I wanna do now at this point is to thank Ms. Puffenberger, Mr. Fiskus, and Mr. Leinbach for their editorial in the paper on Sunday. Thanks.
Thank you. Frank Ruggiero.
Good evening, everyone. Frank Ruggiero, 1316 Anderson. I commend council members Puffenberger, Fiskus, and Leinbach for acknowledging the number of the citizens concerned around the city of Mami leadership and its leadership style as stated in the Toledo Blade July 202025 opinion section. And that article they shared suggested for the reform transparency and action to regain the citizens' trust, which includes listening to us, citizens. In Toledo Blade, July 202025, the article titled "Mami Feelings Mixed After Courts' Recall Ruling Article," Council President Barris quoted saying, "So we are pleased." Yep, now we can go back to the growth of the, of the city like we've been working on. So I'm pleased with it because now we can continue what we were doing. Continue the vision of Mami, make it clean, safe, and prosperous. Mami Mayor McDonald has quoted, "Justice was done today with the decision of the Ohio Supreme Court to overrun the recall effort. Now healing must happen." In my opinion, this attitude does not encourage achieving positive change, but encourages status quo. Hopefully, common sense, integrity, process, and transparency will prevail and regain the citizen's trust. And for those citizens who are expressing their concern and mistrust, please continue. Your voices are slowly being heard, but are being heard and are making a difference. Thank you.
Thanks, Frank. Catherine Stark.
I guess there's a little bit of a common theme happening here. In the candidate forum of 2023, I attended, and I remember you, Mr. Mayor, saying that you believe public service is a privilege, it's a trusted position that puts the community first, good leaders should be adaptable, it's about community engagement and connection, it's about self-asservitude, good leaders should be adaptable, effectively communicate, justice was served, again, it's a theme here. The Ohio Supreme Court affirmed in paragraphs 14 through 16 of their decision that the Mami City Charter does indeed allow for a recall election. The reason they denied it was due to a technical flaw in the charter which does not spell out a mechanism for performing a recall. I don't know if you would want your Detroit wed rings to win on a technicality, but I play tennis and I'm the girl, and if the other teammate doesn't show up on time and the captain wants to enforce it, I'm like, why? This is, why would you wanna win on a technicality? When I listened to that at the candidate forum in 2023, I was excited. I was really impressed with, with those words, but I'm very disappointed. I mean, we need a leader that represents all of us, all of us. This is a technicality, it's, it's so discouraging, so disappointing. We need the charter commission, it's the mayor's appointments to the charter review commission whose legal responsibility is to keep the charter up to date, among other things. We are a democracy, we should have the right to fire people if we feel that things are going awry and things are not being performed. But it just seems like this city wants the power, the power, the power. And you also said in your State of the Union in 2024, you discussed problems with solutions in mind, which I'm sure you do. Applies the rules consistently and keeps employees accountable. What's happened with these change orders? What's happened with these accountability? What about consistently? I watched you allow, I forget the gentleman's name, berate Phil one time. You called decorum on somebody else and you encouraged him to continue. I almost cried. I mean, I'm a yoga girl, this is, I am not, this is unacceptable. We, we need to be consistent with everything that we do. And I'll, I'll end by, again, thanking Leinbach, Fiskus, and Margot for putting yourself out there. I know I've spoken at meetings before, you guys have tough jobs, sometimes I wanna cry for you. Like the June 17th meeting almost a year ago that I attended at 7:00 AM, I made one comment, Mr. Birch said, nobody here is forced to do anything. I don't think anybody's forced, but I feel like there has been some encouragement to follow along, and now we're hearing that that probably was true. Thank you.
Valerie? Valerie?
Call me.
Valerie, yes, yes. Juvenici, yes.
Yeah. What I wanted to address seems so trivial on top of all of what's been discussed with the change orders. It actually was a little bit of a passion that I had for the flowers that were planted across from Union, which were all comb flowers. And I realized that that's all taxpayer money, and then all of a sudden, they were all gone and day lilies were there. So to me, I was curious to what happened to all the comb flowers. That's taxpayer money. I sure hope that somebody got them in their yard. I don't know, but I didn't. But needless to say, I, I'm kinda bugged by every time I come into a meeting, somebody's not turned their phone off or, that's just so irritating, it's just so disruptive, and I'd hope that maybe you guys can make a little rule here that phones need to be put on airplane mode. But that was my whole discussion. I wanted to know where the comb flowers went.
Thank you. Chelsea, Chelsea's this.
I have to talk. I'm sure the city minister would love to talk to you, Valerie, he did not really exactly clear what you're saying, but we'll, we'll talk to you afterwards.
I think the change order thing's been brought up a number of times in speeches, so two minutes.
It has brought, been brought up as the subject or just in addition to what they were saying?
Um, I thought it was brought up as the subject.
Has it?
Okay, go ahead, proceed.
Okay, thank you. Hey, guys, sorry, so I'm the one who did the public records request for those change orders, the invoices and the original contract, so I'm sorry for all the strife this has caused. I requested that because I was curious. Our chapter 103 does allow for change orders of up to 20% to be authorized by internal staff, specifically the mayor or the administrator, without council approval. The reason I was curious is because, as you know, I'm a masochist, I like to read through the agendas, and I noticed that only four change orders, as we talked about today, were on those agendas. So I was curious, what have we spent? There has been nothing public about this yet, so I requested them. And I didn't hear anything back for several weeks. And then I got the contract and I got the invoices. Now, what's really cool about the invoices is it actually included the payment process as a part of those invoices. I still never got the change orders, but I did get them in the packet, which was great because I did not have to pay for them, so thank you for that, I appreciate it. Again, I wanted to take a look and see, now we know that we're $4.4 million and we're at 32% over the original contract price. There hasn't been anything, which what I was concerned about, my pessimism, that change orders of millions of dollars would be going through. There have been a few $500,000 ones, this most recent one that's almost $700,000, et cetera, et cetera. But I did think it was really strange that these change orders are now all included in this packet for the first time ever. And the question that I had, because chapter 103 specifically states, "City council shall be presented with a copy of any change orders and the cost of any change orders." Any of them, not just the ones they approve, not the ones that are just internally approved, any change orders. Now, I didn't see them, I didn't know if they were in the packets, maybe I just didn't know, which could absolutely be the case. But I'd be very curious to know if anybody has seen them. So that's the reason why I did that request to begin with, it wasn't anything crazy or strange, but it did sort of send me down another rabbit hole because, as you know, I'm a bit of a pessimist. I'm not accusing or implying anybody or anything of illegal activities or not polling policy. But I do think that there is a difference between what is legal and what is right. So knowing that, as we heard, that many of these change orders haven't been seen, and knowing that the very newest one is seven months old and that's several. knowing that the very newest one is seven months old, and that several of the others are between two and three and almost four years old, what is the appropriate amount of time until council should review these change orders? Because, yeah, I'm sure it's legal. There is no time limit written into that Chapter 103. But how is it not seen that yet? So I will wrap up really quick. I'm so sorry. My questions are, have all the council members seen these change orders before now?
Done.
Who requested those change orders? And did all of you know how much was spent?
Thank you. Amy, Amy Palkin?
Amy Palkin, Broadway Street, Mami. First of all, Margot, where have you been for the past year? Thank you for showing up. I'm going to take you on a little different rabbit hole here. There was an article in The Blade from one of the business people that throws the farmer's market. As many of you know, Ryan Spangler has been in the hospital fighting for his life for the past week, and the farmer's market was his one baby. It's the one thing that he's always wanted to do. My good friend called me over to his house about a month ago, upset that he was not included. He was told that he would be able to have a table at the farmer's market, and then they denied it. They denied him a right to have a table at our farmer's market. Really? How was that fair? How were they to deny anybody the right to have a table at the farmer's market? Like, well, you don't have anything to sell. He bought produce. He was going to give it away to people who needed it, because that's who Ryan Spangler is. How do we say that we're about community, about people, when we're denying somebody the right to have a table so that he can just thank people, bring people together, because that's all that person wants to do? All Ryan wants to do in his life is bring people together. And that makes me furious. Who has the right? Who made that decision that Ryan Spangler can't have a table? Because I think somebody needs to check into that, because Patrick Birch told him he could have one, and then he was told he couldn't, three times, even when he offered to have produce. I would hope they extubated him today. Once he's back home, nothing would make me happier than to tell him he's got a table at our farmer's market. Phil, John, I also thank you for your editorial. A lot of us have made ourselves sick fighting thus over the last year, myself included. It's never too late. And Margot, you're just trying to take over my title. I kind of like it.
Paula Jones. Paula? Yes.
I am very loud. So if you don't mind, try to get in and out of here and not come to the podium, like I said. If you can't hear me, put your hand up.
I'm not sure if anything online is going to hear you because of yelling back there because the microphone's tied into that.
Yes.
So it's your choice, but...
Okay. Couple things I wanted to bring up. One was about polls. Hallelujah the polls have been taken care of. Okay, we're not going to worry about them. The second had to do with the tax incentive status. You know, as I read over the agenda, sometimes I get confused because I'm not really sure. I don't have the whole packet, so I'm not really sure what's actually being talked about. But we're talking about the tax incentive to a project for the state of Ohio, 0162025. Okay, so then we have another one, 0172025, that was in the consent calendar for $200,000. But then down in the emergency area, the very same number for $280,000. Why would there be a difference for the very same ordinance number in one area? And I mean, you could probably explain it to me, and I, it's probably something I don't understand, but when I'm looking at one area and another area, there's two different areas. And then on top of it, it's going to be an emergency tonight to decide that it has to be signed, due to the fact, how many of skip bills that come into our houses that have to be held as an emergency go past, that we haven't known that it's coming? So that concerns me with that. And the only other thing I had to say was, change orders, and I might have heard wrong, actually, for $17 million? Is that what I heard? Or, I mean, I'm old, so you have to remember. Maybe I didn't hear you, but that just seemed like a lot.
It's not change order.
But that's all I have.
Thank you. Would you mind, can you clear that up for right now?
No. The $17 million number they gave you was the total contract price plus change orders after change order number 21.
Okay, thank you.
Total project.
Julie Korluwski?
Hi, Julie Korluwski, Key Street, Mami. Council members, mayor, and fellow residents, I'd like to thank you for the time you're giving me. Right now, Mami's taking on an enormous amount of work. We're in the middle of the biggest infrastructure project in our city's history. We're also seeing a wave of new development and capital improvements, all while continuing the day-to-day responsibilities of inspections, zoning permits, and everything else that keeps the city running. So I must ask, how are we even more understaffed than we were just a few months ago? We already know our city administrator is also serving as the Public Service Director, the Public Safety Director, and the Human Resource Director, but it doesn't stop there. Our urban planning manager is also filling in as the IT manager. He recently stated under oath in a court case that the IT position is technically vacant. He's just trying to juggle both. Our chief building official testified that his role is part-time, and that he doesn't handle zoning matters. And yet, in that same court case, the city sent a letter to a property owner saying their building was abandoned, and that this determination was made by the urban planning manager, the chief building official, and the city administrator. But under legal testimony, both the planning manager and the building official said they didn't make that decision. They didn't meet about it. The building official hadn't even seen the letter until the day of his deposition. So again, I ask, who's really making the decisions in Mami? According to Section 8 of the city charter, council has the power to create offices and departments, and such additional offices and departments as the council by ordinance or resolution finds to be necessary. It also says council can fix the number of employees in each department and set their compensation. That means if we're short-staffed, if departments are overloaded, if one person is wearing four hats, you have the authority to fix it, and I hope you will. One more thing I'd like to chat about real quick is the way that we are spending our hard-doctored tax dollars. I've found that we're spending on just the garbage cans that are out in the community. We purchased 10 of them for $19,000 apiece. No?
1900.
1900, sorry. 19,000. That's a lot. I thought 1,900 was bad. And also, our, now, I can find these online for commercial grade for $200 apiece, and they look exactly the same. We also have commercial-grade benches that we spent $2,150 on. We bought 10 of these as well. This is our hard-earned money. I don't care what your income level is in the community. We all work hard. Please try to spend our money, our tax money, better. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave, Dave Pappelmeier?
All right. Dave Pappelmeier, 318 Kingsbury. I came up to talk about the city charter tonight, but Catherine Stark stole most of my thunder. Thanks. No. So, so Mami has had a couple really big watershed moments in the last couple years. The sewer, the original sewer ordinance decision, and the Elks meeting, and the city revolting was one of them. And the second one was the Ohio Supreme Court basically telling Mami voters, "You can't vote in a recall because people in 1951 didn't do it right." Okay. So at this point, that is a huge injustice to the people of Mami, okay? But you have the opportunity to do the right thing, okay? So the people of Mami have said, "We want the ability to recall our elected officials. It is a universal right in the United States of America. It's up to you to make that happen now," okay? So like last year, when CMAC was formed, they were integral in helping get sewer program that we have now. So now, I propose that you go back with CMAC and address two major things that need addressed immediately. One of them is the ability to put a recall process in place, and the other one is to move our primary to May, just like the Board of Elections said, "You guys need to do that," okay? This should be fast-tracked. The people have spoken. Please listen to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Megan, Megan Scott? Fine, that's fine.
John, Greenfield Drive?
Yes.
So this week, 33 years ago, my father died. I was 13 years old. From that time of being 13 till about 22, I used to drive up to Idamabye, Michigan, and I'd place a flag on his grave, as it's a small country cemetery. Flags had never been placed there. Back in December, I had contacted Councilman Harris. I wasn't sure how that was going to go, because I'm pretty sure he knew that I opposed a lot of things that he thought and did in council. He was cordial. He responded back. He came to my house. He called the commander of the VFW post. Leading up to Memorial Day, I would go up there every three days to see if flags would be placed. I know I had sent him some other pictures where flags were tattered and torn. He contacted the Legion again, and as I was ready to have 13 ABC meet me up there, Josh had called them, and they showed up that Saturday, and they placed the flags for Memorial Day for 47 veterans that probably wouldn't have had them otherwise in a forgotten cemetery in Michigan. So I just wanted to publicly thank Josh Harris for what he did.
Thank you.
And Jessica Posensky?
Jessica Posensky, Middlesbrough Court, Mami. Good evening, city council, all those in attendance, and those watching at home. I'm here tonight to discuss disability rights. In the interest of full transparency, I want to share that I am currently serving as the Chair of Mami's ADA Advisory Commission. In honor of this week's 35th anniversary of the passing of the Americans with Disabilities Act on July 26, 1990, I would like to ask this administration and all those running in November to pledge support for your disabled community at a time when the current federal administration is quietly rolling back protections. We, your disabled friends and neighbors, will need support now, more than ever, from local government leaders. Disability can touch any of us at any moment. When we prioritize accessibility, we build a community that is safer, kinder, and more resilient for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to comment on a couple of things that people said. One relative to the recall decision, and the second one about the city charter. So the recall initiative obviously started, oh, probably a little bit less than a year ago. So it was obviously not very timely to go after any kind of a charter amendment when there was so much discrepancy going on about that issue over the past year. The ability to move the primary to May was before the voters a couple years ago. They turned it down. They also turned down the right for somebody that had to serve in the military, if they were going to be gone. I think it currently states that you lose your seat if you get called into the military because you're in the reserves. I think that was actually sponsored by Mr. Harris. And his point was, if you get called in the military, you should maintain your seat if you're gone for a year and you come back. The citizens also turned that down. So, yes, does the charter need revision? Yes. I totally agree with you, Mr. Pappelmeier. I think it absolutely needs to get moved to May. The September thing is not, is not practical. I don't know why the citizens turned it down the first time, but they did. I'm also in favor of a recall is an absolute right that somebody has in this country, and that there should be, most communities that have that, there's parameters around it, and I think you just, you said that to some degree. You can't just, you know, there's parameters and there's some rules. And that's obviously what the Supreme Court hung their hat on, was that particular thing. I don't fault any of our residents that joined a recall effort. The problem, the reason why we did what we did and had the right to do it legally, and the reason why I said justice was served, is because the Board of Elections did not get it right. They simply didn't get it right. And that's what started everything going. What they decided was not legal. They did, they allowed it to proceed. Now, anybody that wants to get on the recall after that, that's, I mean, they've been given the green light by the BOE to do it. I don't fault them one bit. I mean, I, that's, you know, they've been told they can do it. The Board of Elections didn't get it right. And that's where, and that's what I meant when I said justice was served, is because the Board of Elections needs to be held accountable for what the decisions they're making. So we'll move on. So we'll do, move on to the adoption of the agenda. We need a motion to approve the agenda as submitted, and a second. And I think we main, we kept, we didn't move the two items.
We didn't move. They're going to finance.
So as submitted. Mr. Fiskus?
Thank you, Mayor. I would move to approve the agenda as submitted.
I'll second.
Thank you. Call the roll.
Leinbach?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Approval and meeting minutes of May 19 and June 5. Motion and second for that.
I'll move to approve those regular meeting minutes of May 19, 2025, and the June 5, 2025 special meeting.
Wait, so I have a question.
We got two different dates.
Yeah. In the the regular copy, it says regular meeting minutes of June 16 and July 8.
June 16 and July 8.
Let me restate that. I will make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of June 16, 2025, and July 8, 2025.
Perfect.
I will second that.
Thank you. Call the roll on that, please.
Leinbach?
Yes.
Kurt, sorry. Puffenberger?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
And under eight petitions and communications, a motion to accept petitions and communication and place on file. I need a motion and second for this, and then we'll list these. I'm supposed to do so? Okay, thank you. Mr. Harris?
Thank you. I move to accept petitions and communications and place them on file.
I think we just need a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just a second's fine.
Second.
Thank you. So the Finance and Economic Development Committee that met on June 9, Finance and Economic Development Committee that met on June, or July 1, Colliers Work Authorization of SWP P P Drawings and Report Associated with the Filling In of the Graham Ditch and the Amount of $7,350, DGL and ODOT Special Funding Application and Amount of $5,500. Mr. Birch, is there anything you want to add to any of that? Okay, any other comments on that, on the PNC? Okay, we'll call the roll on that.
Leinbach?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Thank you. That passed. And on the consent calendar, we need a motion and a second, and we'll list these.
I move to approve all consent calendar items.
I'll second that. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. So A is a recommendation from the Finance Committee, the second reading of ordinance 17, 2025, an ordinance amending 16, 2024, and establishing a basis for allocation of assessments for cost lighting in streets and public ways in the city of Mami. Recommendation from the Finance Committee authorizing the purchase of 39 leased V Recommendation from the Finance Committee authorizing the purchase of 39 leased vehicles that mature this year, and they've already been budgeted. We discussed those things. Recommendation from the Law Director authorizing the mayor or an older city administrator to enter into opioid settlement agreement with, uh, Alvojin, Amnio, Epotex, Hikma, Endevir, Mylan, Sun, and Zitis. Mr., uh, Lineback, could you explain that?
Lineback, um, and Purdue, it's also Purdue Pharma and the Sackler Vanleys.
I'd be glad to.
Yeah. I'm sorry, go ahead.
So what those are is there's class action lawsuits still pending over opioid distribution. Um, and these are additional agreements that have been reached through the state of Ohio's efforts and national efforts with those entities, and will provide some funding for the city of Mami. I think the first one may be about $12,000, um, or may, and the Purdue Pharma is probably in the same range. And what those funds are restricted to use for opioid treatment, um, or counseling and opioid-related matters. So we have some funds that we've already received in the past, and these are just, would add to the funds that we do have for opioid-related matters.
Okay, thank you. Uh, D is a recommendation to the city administrator to approve automatic aid agreement with Springfield Township Fire for the purpose of fire EMS on the Ohio Turnpike. Sometimes this gets confusing as to who to call.
And just the turnpike.
Yeah, just the turnpike, because of where it happens on the turnpike, so, uh...
And I think, Mayor, that's because my understanding is that a lot of times callers that are in incidents on the turnpike don't know where they're at.
That's right.
And they, they can't really get mile markers, and it gets very confusing for the dispatcher. So it's just eastbound, westbound, and they send people out.
Okay, thank you. Uh, E, that's right, excuse, I just, on that note, I wanted to point out that we have backup from the communities around us that, in fact, were, uh, were to need EMS and didn't have it. Mutual aid is with all departments, surrounding departments, yes. Uh, recommendation from the city administrator to approve master service agreement with StanTech to perform design work relative to, uh, relative to tasks that support the SSAS. Recommendation from the city administrator, first reading of ordinance 18, 2025, an ordinance amending, uh, Mami Codified Ordinance 184.02, and the Environmental Commission of the Mami Codified Ordinance and Ordinance 032-2023. Anything on that? Patrick?
That's really just to adjust the terms to the end of the year for all the members. So the ones that currently expired will go to the end of this year, just to make it consistent with most of the other committees.
Okay. Recommendation from the Finance Committee, the first reading of 19-2025, an ordinance levying special assessments for the property owner's share of the cost of lighting the streets and public ways in the city of Mami. Uh, obviously, that cost has been referred to the Finance Committee. Recommendation from the Law Director authorized participation in the Mami opioid early response program. Is this an additional settlement?
No, it's not a settlement. This is a grant program closeout. The police department had a grant that needs to be closed out, and this is authorizing work to be done to close out the grant.
Okay. Uh, first reading of Resolution 16-2025, a resolution declaring the official intent and reasonable expectation of the city of Mami, on behalf of the state of Ohio, the borrower, to reimburse its sewer fund for the CL09AB/CL10AB Uptown Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Phase 4 from the proceeds of tax-exempt debt for the state of Ohio. So this is, this is actually borrowing funds from the state? Yes?
Yes, it's OPWC money.
Okay.
But this particular, I apologize, this particular, um, the next three resolutions are regarding in-kind work, and it is attributed to our portion of the grant.
Okay.
And the reason it says tax-exempt, those are bonds issued by the state that are exempt from income taxes, is my understanding.
Right.
I also understand that the next three, for the, for everybody's information, on the one we're discussing here on I, it's actually $294,000 for the Uptown lining replacement. And, uh, on J, um, which is basically the same thing but Phase 5, it's $500,000 for the Uptown lining replacement. And then on K, it's Phase 1, um, it's $200,000, uh, East End of Mami, which is basically Richland, um, north of 7th Street, are the, are the locations for those. So they're basically all the same thing, different phases, different projects. You need me to read right through those, or is that understood? Okay. Anything further? Questions? Okay, uh, before you is a, a motion and a second to pass the consent counter. Call the roll.
Lineback?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Ten, uh, new business, A is basically the same as the last three, uh, but this is involving, uh, federal money, uh, EPA money, um, and it's for the, um, uh, Elizabeth Street Pumping Station Generator Replacement. Um, and, um, this is gonna need an emergency pass, uh, so it's, uh, approved Resolution 14-2025, authorizing the mayor or city administrator to, to apply for and accept and enter into Water Pollution Control Loan Fund on behalf of the city of Mami for planning, design, or construction of new replacement sewers and excess sewer infiltration, inflow corrections, designated a dedicated repayment source for the loan, and declared an emergency. I'll need two motions on this, one for emergency and one...
I'll make that motion.
Okay. And a second?
Thank you. I'll second.
Thank you. We'll call the roll on that.
Lineback?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
And then the resolution, please, if you wanna read that? A motion to approve?
I approve resolution, I move to approve Resolution 0142025, a resolution authorizing the mayor or city administrator apply for, accept, and enter into a water pollution control loan fund agreement on behalf of the city of Mami for planning, design, and/or construction of new replacement sewers and excess sewers, infiltration and flow corrections, and a designated a dedicated repayment source for the loan, and declaring an emergency. Thank you, and I'll second that motion.
Call the motion on the approval?
Lineback?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
And this Resolution 15-2025 on B is a resolution authorizing the mayor or city administrator to apply for, accept, and enter into a water pollution control loan fund agreement on behalf of the city of Mami for relining or planning, design, or construction of new or replaced sewers and excess sewer infiltration or inflow corrections. And this, um, basically rounds up the Uptown Relining Project. So I need two motions on this, please. Yes?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I'd first move to suspend the rules and declare an emergency.
And I'll second that motion.
Thank you. We'll call the roll on that, please.
Lineback?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
And then I will move to approve the Resolution 0152025.
And I'll second that.
Call the roll? On approval?
Lineback?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Okay, that's, uh, that's approved. We'll go to C, a recommendation from the Law Director approving Resolution 17-2025, declaring the official intent and reasonable expectation of the city of Mami, on behalf of the state of Ohio, with the borrower, to reimburse its sewer fund for CL33AA-CL34AA, the Mami Uptown Sanitary Sewer, which is, this Phase 3 is actually the east side, with the, uh, proceeds of the tax-exempt debt of the state of Ohio, and declaring an emergency. And this is for $283, $280,000. And there's a timing issue on this, hence the reason for an emergency. Need two motions on this. Mr. Puffenberger? Yes?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor McDonald. I'd like to suspend the rules and declare an emergency.
I'll second.
All right, thank you. Call the roll.
Lineback?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
And I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 017-2025, resolution declaring the official intent and reasonable expectation of the city of Mami, on behalf of the state of Ohio, the borrower, to reimburse its sewer fund for the CL33AA- or slash CL34AA, Mami Uptown Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Phase 3, with the proceeds of tax-exempt debt of the state of Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Mr. Lineback? And we'll call the roll on the approval.
Lineback?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
And D is a consideration of change order 22 of the Helms' Order of Construction for the Mami Uptown Project, and I need a motion to approve Order 22, uh, in favor of Helms' construction for the project.
I'll, uh, move to approve Change Order 22 in favor of Helms' construction for the Mami Uptown Project.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any further discussion on that? Call the roll, please.
Lineback?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
And old business is actually a third reading. Approve Ordinance 14-2025, an ordinance amending Section 1305-10, an ordinance 003-2024 of the Mami Codified Ordinances, and we'll need a motion, uh, to approve 14-2025. And can you explain what this is? We have an explanation what this is?
That's a building permit affidavit.
This is a third reading.
Yeah, I do, I, I do really wanna make clear, and I, and Councilman Harris brought this up.
Patrick, get a bit closer to the mic.
I'm sorry. Um, the affidavit was, um, amended. Uh, Jessica asked for an amendment at the ADA Commission, and Alan prepared this, but I wanna make very clear that regardless of how it says, anybody can help anybody do the work. State law is clear that if you're doing trades work and you're getting paid for it, you have to be licensed, unless you live and own the home. That's what this affidavit does. It just says, when you come in and pull a permit for somebody, you have to verify you're the homeowner, or you're the homeowner doing the work, and that you're not paying anybody to do the work. You could have everybody in the street help you if you want. It's not precluding that. I just wanna make sure.
I, I'm just curious why, in, in the wording for it, it wasn't that simple. I've just stated that simply.
There it is.
We had to explain who the owner and his or her family, and, you know, takes up another paragraph during this, right? Why, why did we have to do that?
Because you're giving exception to, to somebody who didn't have to be licensed, and it was very clear, and it, statute doesn't allow us to say anybody can do it. The idea is with, the restriction has to be made. If, if you wanna amend it to say that if you're getting paid, and that's, it is obvious that if you're gonna pull a, if you're gonna do work on somebody's home or a rental and you don't live there, you can't do trades work on your own. By law, you have to have a licensed contractor. So I, I guess what Alan was trying to do is here, just expand the, you know, as people request, we ask that we expand that, that definition.
Yeah. I do believe that was the intent. It's just still confusing to me.
The ordinance itself allows the administration to draft the affidavit, doesn't specify in there.
I recall some of these questions during the first reading, so I can't actually recall exactly what was said, uh, a couple meetings ago, but I do recall it was part of the discussion. Anything further on that?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll call the roll on the, all right. We need a motion and a second, please. Mr. Kurt, can we have a motion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I move that we, uh, approve ordinance, uh, the third reading of, uh, ordinance, uh, number 14-2025, uh, which amends Section 1305.10 and ordinance 0032024 of the Mami Codified Ordinances, uh, specifying the coordinating narrative of Section 1305.10 and the homeowner That is, uh...
Second, please?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any further? Call the roll on the motion, the third reading.
Lineback?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
We'll move to comments. Uh, I'll start, um, just to remind everybody, the Taste of Mami Summer Fair is August 8th and 9th coming up. Also, um, the 28th overpass, I believe it's for the completion of that, uh, some paving and getting those lights up and running. Um, July 28th, it's gonna close for a week, so don't go down Illinois, uh, till ODOT gets that wrapped up. And, um, also, I would like to, um, thank Casey, uh, for her work and what she does each and every day. Uh, she gets a barrage of records requests, and sometimes when people say, I don't get it for a couple weeks, or, you know, it's taking time, there are, there are other duties and there are other requests that come in. Um, she does her darndest to get everything together, and sometimes the requests are very extensive, um, a, a, as well as people requesting things on, or demands on the agenda, or they want this, or they want that, they're, they're constantly getting fired at her, along with the other stuff that she does. So I just wanna thank you for the efforts that you, you put on each and every day. Sometimes it can be very demanding. People do, uh, they demand things of you, and, um, and I just appreciate everything you've done, so thank you. And we'll move on to, um, Mr. Lineback.
Thank you, Mayor McDonald. Uh, two topics that I wanna address. The city charter, someone brought that up. Uh, the city charter states in Article 4, Section 5D, the mayor's executive powers, that the mayor shall, quote, "have the power, subject to confirmation by a majority of "have the power, subject to confirmation by a majority of the members of council, to appoint, promote, transfer, reduce, or remove any officer or employee of the municipality, except those required by this charter to be elected." Now Administrative Code 123.01 describes the administrator's powers, duties, and authority. And it includes this item to, quote, "hire, suspend, discipline, and dismiss city employees." Now, we appear to have two positions with the same powers. Here's my question. If the administrator and mayor disagree about a specific personnel action, who prevails? As a hypothetical example, say the administrator wishes to terminate... Close your ears, chief, the police chief. But the mayor does not support that action. Who is the ultimate authority? The mayor or the administrator? If, in fact, the mayor has ultimate authority, then the charter states that council must approve the action with a majority vote. We cannot do that in executive session. Can't take votes in executive session. There must be a public vote. Have we done that in all cases? I'm not so sure, but maybe we should be doing that. My second comment relates to the letter that three council members put out. And there were comments in an online article that I wanted to address. And we feel it is important to address and correct the mayor's recent statements suggesting that council members, quote, "haven't come forward," end quote, and that there has been, quote, "no discussion and input," unquote, on key issues. This characterization is simply not accurate. We've made multiple attempts to meet and engage with the mayor, including requests for meetings that were either declined or ignored, and even most recently, just this past week. These efforts were made in the spirit of collaboration and transparency with the goal of finding solutions together on behalf of our community. While we have shared ideas and concerns through emails, as is often typical in early stages of discussion, these communications were intended to open the door for deeper face-to-face conversations. To dismiss them as, quote again, "innuendos," unquote, is not only unfair, but overlooks the fact that the mayor has not made himself available for the very discussions he now claims are lacking. We remain committed to open communication, mutual respect, and working in good faith for the betterment of our city. We urge the mayor to join us in creating a more cooperative environment where dialogue is welcomed and progress can be made together. One other correction should be noted. In that same online article, the administrator's contract was approved, as I understand, in December 2021. The mayor, at that time, was on city council, and he may have voted to approve it. But council members Puffenberger, Fiskus, and Lineback did not vote for it because none of us were on council when that vote was taken. My final comment, again regarding the article. The administrator stated in the online article that some of the changes we propose might or would violate his employment contract. We need to remember, however, that the city charter governs our operations, and it cannot be changed by an employment contract. If there's a conflict between the two, then the city charter prevails. These comments were made in kind of a clinical fashion. I mean no diswill to anybody. It's clearly there's a disagreement going on, and we need to share our opinion and set the record straight. Thank you.
Ms. Puffenberger?
Thanks. So I'd like to say congratulations to Andrea. It's nice to see some of our staff getting acknowledged and for doing such a great job. I'd like to, you know, share my condolences for Mike McCarthy's friends and family. He was a really nice guy, and it was hard not to see him at the candidate forum. He's missed tonight at the meeting, and he will be missed for many, many community events moving forward. We suffered a big loss there. I love Small Community Papers, and The Mirror is great. I wanted to remind everyone about July 30th at 6:00 PM at the Mami Indoor. We will be hosting the How to Power a City documentary. It's described as giving front row seats to people finding solutions. So the Environmental Advisory Committee is putting on that movie. Also, on August 19th, we will be doing another rain garden talk and tour. This time, Sarah is doing the talk again at the library, and she'll be giving kind of more hands-on activities and such on how you can create a rain garden. And then we plan to take a tour of a rain garden at a home on West Broadway. So participants have the option to kind of go see the rain garden as well after. I'd like to kind of echo some of Councilman Lineback's statements about the Blade article. You know, I reiterate the same. I have not approved any contract changes of, you know, our city administrators since being on council. You know, they had the big change kind of after he was hired, and that was in 2021. So I was not a part of that. And once again, you know, we did try to have conversations. And, you know, going public like that was not the way we wanted to go. We wanted to try to keep things moving forward with some of the concerns that we had. Like, I know I met on May 1st, had a meeting. We had executive sessions in May. We had another meetings in June. I had phone calls with the mayor in June. And, you know, we requested a conversation in July that was turned down. So we have definitely been making attempts to have conversations and try to work through this. And I think that's it. Thanks.
Mr. Barrow?
Jessica, thank you for what you do. You bring a lot to the table. And I hope you're able, and the people that you deal with are able to use the beautiful amenities the city has provided, AKA the towpath, one of the proudest things that brings Mami and lots of people. And it's a very versatile, easy-for-access. If you have a dog, it has a fountain for the dog to drink. People bottles, too, to fill up. Also, the McCarthy family, as I've already been stated more than one time, my heart goes out to you. Prayers are your way, of course. And I consider Mike was a friend of mine. And we go to see each other out at Uptown and have a really nice event there. On the other hand, I did read that article in the Blade. And just for what was said here tonight, people, you know, there's a two-way communications. And if people are called, and called, and called, and don't return the calls... And I'll let Mayor McDonald speak about that if he plant wants to do that. But there are things in the works. But when you don't get a response and they call back, and you can't get things accomplished. So efforts have been made, and efforts have been tried to be made. But it takes two to come to the table.
Mr. Fiskus? Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to give a little backstory as to why I made the decision to contribute to the letter to the editor. It's not a decision made on a few incidents, but rather an ongoing pattern of communication and behavior that prevents myself and others on this body from doing our duty as elected officials. Forgive me if I don't get too specific, as there's items I'm unable to divulge for legal and ethical reasons. Over the last two years, on multiple occasions, I've privately expressed frustrations with specific issues with how this elected body functions and communicates. On most occasions, issues are typically addressed. However, there's also been a pattern of those issues resolving over only to regress weeks or months later, back into what was the original concern. Based on comments made during recent council meetings, it became apparent that fellow council members shared my concerns. Sunshine laws and open meeting acts allow three council members to meet, so we did to discuss how to best address these concerns through our council processes. We requested a special meeting to discuss our concerns, and while some conversation was had, it was left open-ended so it could be continued at a later date. When asked to have another meeting to continue our discussion, we were denied. That conversation and concerns were raised and have yet to be readdressed. On my own, I requested that three items be placed on today's agenda so that we could have a first reading and discussion here in this chamber as is required by law. I was met with resistance and a plethora of reasons why all my requests would not or could not be granted. And ultimately, as you can see from the agenda presented today, I was denied. Because of our sunshine laws, which govern how, where, and with whom we can talk about business, I can't call up any additional council members to gauge how they feel about those items. The only way to have that discussion at a public council is at a public council meeting. By denying even the addition of these items to the agenda, myself and others were unable to share our reasoning with any of our fellow council members without breaking the law. I understand it's very easy to question the timing of our letter, and that is your right. Not everyone is privy to the same information, and sharing of information within this body in the city of Mami needs work, and is one of the very issues we are attempting to address. I can only work with the facts I'm presented with. I can't rely on secondhand information. Accusations without evidence are not actionable. What seemed like the best decision three and a half years ago may no longer work, and I am willing to say that publicly and act on it. I remain committed to keeping an open mind and working for Mami, even if that means reversing my decisions I have made in the past. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Harris?
Thank you. First, of course, my condolences go out to the McCarthy family. I ended up getting a phone call about that, hearing that, and kind of stopped me in my tracks and told my wife, and she even started bawling. So definitely sorry for losing him in this community. As the mayor alluded to, he was a big Red Wings and Tigers fan, and so am I. And it was for the past four years, he's always said, "Oh, those Tigers, all those Tigers." For the first time this year, he was like, "How about them Tigers?" It was nice to kind of talk a good shot with him about that. But he's definitely going to be missed. John Scott, I want to, first of all, thank you for your comments. But I actually want to reciprocate back to you. I wouldn't have known that there were some issues up there without you. So I definitely want to thank you for bringing that to my attention. And then, Mayor, I think you asked, you were kind of concerned as to why the last time we had a vote on the charter, why that one was not passed. I think it was because it was consolidated with also taking off the RD or I behind the names. And I think that's why that one didn't pass. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Kurt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I wish the McCarthy family was still here because I would like to express my condolences as well. I'm going to miss coming to the meetings and seeing the white-haired guy with the camera around his neck. Always a camera around his neck, whether it's at a council meeting or out at one of the events. Probably wore a camera around his neck when he went to church, who knows? But it's unfortunate that we will not see the guy with the camera around his neck anymore. Andrea Shrewsbury, I wish she were here. I would like to congratulate her becoming Clerk of Court Clerk of the Year. I, myself, back in the previous century, was a court clerk. I worked for a judge when I was in law school. And if the Court Clerk Association would have written a letter detailing all of my achievements, all it would say was, "He drove Judge Darrell to Dyer's every day for lunch, and then picked him up two hours later." But I don't know that that would have qualified me to be the Court Clerk of the Year. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Burton, do you have anything?
Yeah, I just, I handed these out, the new PowerPoints, to council. So you had until August, the August meeting to review them. There were some comments made by the public because we have yet to receive our authorization from the consent order. I think we're close. But I put in, I amended these in the loan commitment page, which is right here, that said that special conditions will be made after a year from signing the commitment form. Because in particular, I met with a gentleman today that six months ago signed a commitment form, and now he's running out of time. So we got to, I couldn't put it in there like somebody suggested that said it's when that consent decree becomes signed because there's always a very small chance it won't be, and that council will have to make a decision to do something. So it gives the Capitol Project's manager the ability to extend that timeframe for people who have that need. So I give it to you ahead of time, so you have it for next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Need a motion to go into executive session for pending litigation and personnel. So moved? Second?
Second.
Thank you.
A point of order?
Uh, yes.
Just to reiterate for the laws governing executive session that no public body shall hold an executive session for the discipline of an elected official for conduct related to the performance of the elected official's duties. Just wanted to make sure we remembered that. Thank you.
Okay, call the roll.
Lineback?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Harris?
Mr. Mayor, would you please call order, please?
Harris?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Thank you. Go into executive session.
...
You probably had dinner in that black bag there, or the brown bag.
Someone gets a free water tomorrow. Where's Josh?
Josh went to the restroom.
No.
Over there.
We do have a quorum.
Motion and second to come out of executive session. Second. Call the rule please.
Yes.
Puff and Burger?
Yes.
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 Motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn until our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Yeah, I was second to that.
Thank you. Call the rule on that.
Lineback?
Yes.
Puff and Burger?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. We're adjourned.